Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 19, 2025 work session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance with the exception of Mishanta, who will be arriving later this evening. Before I begin, what I'd like to do is, this evening, we pause to honor the life of David Gensert, an Arcola intermediate student who would have been entering Methacton High School this fall. David began his education journey with Methacton at War Sister Elementary. From the start, he loved school. He walked into the classroom each day with a smile that lifted others and an eagerness to learn. The staff at Arcola described him as a bright, shining light, someone who made the classroom and the school better simply by being in it. Even when his health kept him from attending school in person, David remained deeply connected to his friends. Through a virtual lunch bunch on Google Meet, his classmates would gather in the Arcola conference room to laugh, share stories, and keep David close to the daily life of school. David also had a love for fishing, and he delighted in sharing his fishing adventures with both the students and the staff. We are grateful for the time David spent in Methacton and the smiles and joy he brought to our community. We extend our deepest sympathies to his family, his friends, and all who knew him and loved him. David's courage, joy, and warmth will long be remembered in Methacton. Please join me in a moment of silence for David Gensert, who passed away Thursday, July 24, 2025. Thank you. We'll now move to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi?
Thank you, Madam President. Before we do that, if I will have an executive session announcement. There was an executive session of the Property Committee held on August 7, 2025, in the Farina Admin Building for the purpose of consulting the solicitor on a contract with a third-party vendor. With that, this evening, we have two guests on scheduled speakers. We have Dr. Matt Walsh, Director of Curriculum Instruction here to introduce to the board and to the public the new teacher induction individual. So, Dr. Walsh, would it be best if our board was sitting out there to watch this video?
Yeah.
Yeah, so members of the board could take a seat out front. We have a video, as we traditionally do at this time of the year.
And while we're queuing that up, I'll just do a quick introduction of our new inductees before we play the video. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everyone. As the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, I have the joy of being the official induction coordinator, and each year I have the pleasure of working with some incredible new staff members to what we call our New Teacher Academy, also known as Induction. This is one of my favorite moments of the year, not just because we're filling teaching positions, but because we're adding passionate, dedicated educators who will inspire our students to commit to their fullest potential and strengthen our community. So each year, our new inductees bring their own story, talents, and passions. While their backgrounds are unique, they share one important thing: a belief that every student can grow, achieve, and thrive when given the right opportunities and support. So tonight, we officially welcome our 21 new inductees into the Methacton family. Please join me in celebrating their arrival and the amazing work we know is yet to come. I hope you enjoy this video that showcases our new teachers.
If I could be any animal, I would be a butterfly because I'm always growing. I would be a seagull because I love the beach, and seagulls get to eat whatever they want. They're always taking people's, like, french fries or, like, other food on the beach.
Um, I think I would be an elephant because of their memory.
I would be a dolphin. I definitely love that they look graceful, beautiful, and are strong.
Uh, probably a panda. They're my favorite animal. Um, they're just so cute. They're kind of...
I think I would choose an eagle because I'd be able to see above and see everything that's going on.
Lion, because I'm a natural-born leader. I'm the oldest of five children. So I'm used to being organized and trying to keep everything in order, and now I have children of myself. So, um, yes, it was lion.
Um, I would probably be a cheetah because cheetahs are super fast.
I would be, I think, a female lion. And I've always appreciated the way that they protect their little ones. And especially in nursing, as a certified school nurse, I feel like that's kind of how I feel about the kids in the school. I want to protect them, make sure they have everything that they need, teach them skills. So I think that's a, yeah, I would be.
I would say a mouse because I'm really small. I could hide in different things and, you know, speak something.
My first day of school song would definitely be "This Girl Is On Fire."
A hundred percent dancing fool by ABBA just gets me going in the morning, and I think in kindergarten, just gonna keep on dancing.
Uh, definitely pimple. I like high-energy, um, like, music, like, maybe dance. So I'll say anything about pimple.
Um, I don't know who sings it, but I'm pretty sure we all know that song, "Pump Up The Volume." Um, I don't know. Every time I hear it, no matter what mood I'm in, I just get in a good mood, and it just motivates me.
I don't know, probably the song "Happy" by Pharrell Williams, just because he makes me happy. I'm a little wicked to be happy.
Uh, on my first day of school soundtrack, I would definitely play "Vivian Vida", which is a Marc Anthony song, one of my favorites to play for my Spanish students.
Justin Timberlake and the "Got That Feeling" song. Why can't I think of what it's called? "I got the feeling, dance, dance."
Um, I would say Taylor Swift, because she's coming out with her new album, too, so.
I'm gonna go with my guy, the boss, Bruce Springsteen. I'm a big Springsteen fan. Uh, first day of school, probably "No Surrender." Um, the lyrics says never treat, no surrender. So, first day of school, just diving in, ready to go.
Go ahead back and I'll just do my closing. Thank you. We hope you enjoyed the video and got to see the different side of our new teachers. I thank Julia Scrovek and her team for putting this together for our staff. And though I actually be able to see it tomorrow, it's actually on our YouTube channel today. So if you really want to see it again, go for it. We also welcome the many new support staff members to our district who are vital in preparing the school for our first day, for our staff tomorrow, and all our students arrive next Tuesday. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Next on the agenda, we have the Methacton High School planning update. So as members of the board recall, back in, I'm gonna say, February, March of 2025, we made a determination to investigate what renovation would look like on the Methacton High School campus. This evening, as we've had, we have the Schrader Group and CHA with us to present quite a bit of information. And one of the things that they're gonna talk about on actually the first side of the presentation is a timeline. And so I want you to be, I just want to bring to your attention that tonight is not necessarily the night where you need to absorb all this information because there's a lot. And when I say there's a lot, um, I'm not kidding, and you will see that at the end of the presentation. But our goal here this evening is really to deliver this information to you. We've created larger hard copies for your further review. And we're hopeful that at the next week, when we meet at the voting meeting, we provide an opportunity for you to ask more position questions after you had further review. Certainly, you can ask them this evening, but we want to make sure that you have ample time to ask the questions, get the information that you need. So here this evening, we have Devin and Josh as the leads for our design professionals to go over the four options for us. Devin?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure how to raise this thing, but... You may want to also sit in the front. We do have some videos. So as I try to raise this, we'll do that. They may not be as exciting or as funny as the last videos you saw, but... All right, thank you. So we're here today to finally showcase some of the concepts that we've been working on over the past several months. We do have another board meeting to attend next week. So we're happy to take any feedback, any questions at that time. We'll certainly take some tonight if there are already, but you'll have a full week to kind of gather all of this information and then come back next week and be prepared for any Q and A. We have several meetings in September, so we're gonna visit the Property Committee. We have two public forums that we're hoping to present this information to the public. And then we'll be back at the work session on September 16th to present the final concept. So we may take some feedback from these August meetings and then tweak some things and do a final concept presentation on September 16th. Then we'll be back again at the board meeting to present any public feedback that we've gotten and present a projected budget. October will be another Property Committee general update board work session where we'll do a final summary of everything and get our final Q and A. And then hopefully that leads to a vote on one of the concepts on October 28th. With that, I'm gonna let Josh explain the baseline scope.
Okay, thanks, Devin. So we've been talking about what the issues have been within the existing building. Obviously, there were many reports performed over the past couple of years, probably culminating with the Bureau Veritas Complete Facility Study. So what we want to absolutely make sure we do is put the district in a good position to make sure that what we've been calling Warm, Safe, Dry, and I always kind of joke, I think maybe it should be Cool, Safe, Dry, or Dehumidified, Safe, Dry, but basically improvement stage HVAC, building envelope, and critical systems that support health and safety, such as fire alarm, sprinkler systems, those types of things. So within the baseline scope, and what we're gonna show you later are going from baseline and four different options that Schrader Group and we have come up with. But we want to make sure absolutely that this building is in very good condition in terms of systems and infrastructure. So the building envelope, there will be a partial roof replacement planned for that. Some of the roofs are newer. There are portions of the building where it will be due for roof replacement. So we're certainly gonna make sure that roofing systems are replaced as needed. If there are any masonry facade components, such as brick or flashing or stone accents, cast stone or limestone, that those are addressed for purposes of water infiltration and for structural integrity. HVAC system, obviously, we've been talking about that for quite a while. The intent is to replace what the classroom unit ventilator setup is with what we call a four-pipe VAV system that will help with dehumidification and that will help with temperature control throughout the building. Along with that, planning for complete building automation system upgrades, new central plant equipment, chillers and boilers, exhaust fans, so basically the entire HVAC system. Similar with the electrical system, lighting upgrades to the latest technology with LED lighting, distribution equipment such as panel boards, switchboards, the main switchgear transformers, all of those types of equipment also slated for replacement within the baseline scope. Do I have, is this, will this advance the slide or... Do we have plumbing? Thank you. Okay, so as far as plumbing systems go, we are looking at installing a wet pipe sprinkler system. A portion of the building does have sprinklers. In fact, this wing that we're in right now has a wet pipe sprinkler system. We would be suggesting the addition of other spaces within that, within the building for fire sprinkler system. Fixtures, as they especially would relate to ADA clearances and accessibility, those would be replaced. Safety and security involving surveillance cameras, card access components, perimeter security, all of those types of systems, again, for the health and safety of the building. And obviously, ADA improvements, we know that that is a key priority for the district. So we would look to improve ADA approach and clearances and really provide more friendly spaces for ADA accessibility. So I'll turn this back over to Devin. He can kind of go through the priorities, kind of give you a refresher on that exercise and how they're gonna play into the different options that have been developed for the floor plan.
All right, thanks, Josh. So we were here, I think, in June of this year where the board voted on the priorities that were to be implemented into each of our concepts. And just, these couple of slides are a reminder of which priorities we were tasked with incorporating into those concepts. So Priority Group One, the most important, are to improve traffic flow and eliminate congestion and car traffic at arrival and dismissal. So that's a site item to work with. There's also a traffic flow inside the building, so hallway congestion, outdoor transition. We're trying to address and improve the travel time of students within the building. Pool, new pool with eight lanes and ADA improvements. As you know, you currently have a six-lane pool with some ADA challenges. We'd like to create a fitness and wellness center, create a life skills apartment transition space, and create a common space that can enable a lunch and learn program. So those are your six top priority items that we're trying to get into these concepts. Priority Group Two, which was the second level of voting, we had the connection to the public sewer. We are not going to pursue that one based on conversations that we've had previously, so we can cross that one off the list. The rest of them are starting to be incorporated into these concepts. So we're looking to increase quantity of parking spaces, create a steam center, create a fab lab, build a new auditorium and include ADA improvements. We also see at the bottom line there, improvements to the performing arts spaces. So we have two performing arts things that are a little bit competing with each other, but equal priorities. And then enlarging the classrooms to 850 square feet. So those are our priorities, and we'll list the options that actually address each of those. So as we get through our concepts, there are a total of four, and we're numbering them as 1A, 1B, 2A, and 2B. All options include everything that Josh just explained in the baseline scope. So everything in that baseline scope is gonna be consistent throughout, and then we're adding to that baseline scope for all of the options. Options 1A and 1B include a new pool, so that's the only new construction piece that you'll see, and then various levels of renovations throughout the building. And each option is gonna build on the previous one in terms of increased areas of renovations. Options 2A and 2B are a little bit different. We're including demolition of the areas with the highest needs. That'll be identified as the west wing and the B wing, and we'll show you where those are located. So demolition of those areas and then new construction of a two-story classroom wing and performing arts area. So 2A and 2B, a little bit more new construction. 1A and 1B is mostly renovations. All the options are being evaluated for cost, constructibility, phasing, and educational impact. And we'll kind of go through those as we get through each of the options. Site options are being evaluated simultaneously and independently. So the site options don't necessarily fit to one of the building options. The options 1 for site can fit into 1A or 1B, and options 2 for site can fit into 2A or 2B. So you'll kind of be able to pick and choose the extent of site work that needs to be done per the building concept. So let's get right into some of the concepts. This is just a reminder, just to orient everybody. The west wing is this wing down here. The B wing is the space where your family and consumer science spaces are. The mid wing is the newest part of the building here. We're sitting in the LGI currently. And then the east wing is over across from the cafeteria. So that's just the slide to help orient everybody because we're gonna start to talk about west wing and B wing specifically. So Option 1A. First, all of these options are gonna show similar colors. So the blue space that you see here is all new construction. The orange or peach colors are all reconfiguration of space. We're keeping all of the existing structure, but we might be demolishing some of the interior walls and reconfiguring the space into something new. The greens are strictly a renovation, and it's a little bit above the baseline level. So we're doing a little bit more in spaces like this library space here, above and beyond what's included in the baseline scope. So Option 1A. Obviously, you can see the new pool is located here, and you'll see that through all of the options. We have inside the existing pool, which is this space here, we're adding the FCS classrooms, a new fab lab, a flexible classroom, and the life skills apartment. And those FCS classrooms are being moved from this area because we're trying to create that wellness center, fitness center, over in this B wing. So you'll see a fitness center, a training area, all of that becomes the wellness fitness center, and then there's some team spaces in there as well. The green area here is going to be a commons that will enable us to have the lunch and learn program. So that lower level of the current library can be converted into a space pretty easily that can accommodate a lunch and learn program. All we would have to do there is kind of open up some of these walls here to connect so that they can access the cafeteria and come down into that lower level of the cafeteria, or lower level of the library. So all of our priorities are over here, listed here. We are addressing the new pool. We are creating the fitness and wellness center, creating the life skills apartment, partially improving the internal traffic flow. This is a little bit of a stretch here. We're pulling some classroom spaces away from the B wing into a more centralized space. So it is technically improving the traffic flow slightly. So we're listing that as a partial achievement there. We are creating the lunch and learn space. The commons here will allow us to have that lunch and learn space. So those are Priority One items that are addressed in Option 1A. Priority Two, the only thing we've added here is that fab lab, which is a space that's being infilled in the existing pool. It's tough to see here, but the renovations or the new additions are about 13,000 square feet, and that gets us to a total of about 344,000 square feet for the entire high school campus. We are not losing any classrooms. We're not adding any classrooms. So we're touching four spaces. We're moving them over to this area, and then we're creating four new spaces there. So the net would be zero with the addition of that fab lab space. So the only program space that's being added is the fab lab. Second floor doesn't have any work to it, so it's only baseline on the second floor. Option 1B, so everything that we just mentioned in Option 1A, the pool, the fitness center, all of the fab lab, life skills spaces, all of that is the same, the same lunch and learn program over in the lower level of the library. The additions for 1B are renovations to the performing arts spaces. And that was a Priority Two item, so improvements to educational performing arts spaces is addressed in 1B. And you can see a small addition off of the lobby of the auditorium just to get a little bit more space for that space over there. On the second floor, we are addressing those smaller classrooms. So there are eight current undersized classrooms. We are converting those to six full-size classrooms. So that addresses our Priority Two item of enlarging classrooms to 850 square feet. So you can see here, there's not much of a difference in the total square footage. It's approximately the same as 1A, but we are losing two classrooms total, and we're still getting that addition of the fab lab. So that is Option 1A and 1B. And Option Two will start to look a little bit different here. Again, the blue is all the new construction, so you can see it's a little bit more extensive over here. We're obviously losing the B wing, and we're losing the west wing over here. So in this option, build a new pool, build a new two-story classroom addition, and build a new performing arts complex here. Still have your main entrance where it currently is, and then everything in the white remains as it is. The lunch and learn program, again, is being addressed the same way as in 1A and 1B. And then over here, it's a little bit different. We have the fitness center filling in where the existing pool is. We still have the life skills apartment in the same location, and then we have FCS and the fab lab moving over to where the current girls' gymnasium is. And we're okay losing the girls' gymnasium because we're creating this giant fitness and wellness center that can then kind of accommodate that additional programming for health and phys ed. So we're addressing all the same Priority Ones. We are now improving internal traffic flow, not partially. We're completely improving it because we're bringing all the classrooms closer to the rest of the classroom spaces. We're also building a new auditorium with ADA improvements. So that's another Priority Two item that's being addressed in 2A. Second floor, I'll just show you how that looks. Obviously, the classroom space is gonna be the same. That's a two-story classroom wing. And then there's some classrooms on the second floor adjacent to your top of your auditorium space, which also has the two LGI spaces attached to it. You can see on your sheets here, this says a net of minus two classrooms. We are touching 34 existing classrooms and adding 32 new. So we're losing two total classroom spaces. We're still adding the fab lab. So it's essentially the same calculation as 1B. Square footage, interestingly, we are adding about 81,000 square feet, but the total building square footage goes down by about 14,000 square feet. So by creating a little bit more efficient building, we're able to make it more consolidated and get the total square footage down. Now 2B. So all of these priority items are gonna be exactly the same as what we just saw on 2A. The only difference is here is gonna be a little bit of a configuration, and we're gonna be addressing things a little bit differently in 2B versus 2A. So we still have, all the blue is new construction, all of the... All of the orange is reconfiguration of spaces. All of the green is a renovation. The blue here, the pool is in the same location. We now have performing arts down in this zone. We have a two-story classroom wing coming off of the front of the building now. And then we have a more secure entry because your entry is now coming in from the side of the building rather than from the front. So it's addressing Germantown Ave a little bit, Germantown Pike a little bit more here and less on the Cribble Mill. This does pull the administrative suite over here to get that entrance. And what this does differently is it creates a zone of public community space all over in this area. So you have your, your auditorium, your main gym, your pool, all in the same zone surrounding this common space. So in this case, the second floor or the, the upper level of the library becomes that lunch and learn area, and the, the lower level converts to a more of a typical library classroom space. So you get a true commons in here that accesses the auditorium, the gym and the pool, and you have a different entryway coming in through this direction instead. Second floor, you can see we are significantly in this, in this case, improving the internal traffic flow. We're getting the classrooms really close to the mid wing. So students in the mid wing can now come right across to these classrooms rather than having to go all the way down here, and they can come down a central stair to get to the spaces this way instead of having to go outside through that mid wing. So a little bit better improvement of the traffic flow, a little bit different orientation of the spaces, but similar addressing of the priorities for both priority one and priority two. This case, we do have more square footage, about 10,000 square feet more in option 2B, but the same number of classrooms, it's a net of minus two. So again, you're losing two classrooms in all of the options except for 1A. Now, site, completely different. We have options 1X, 1Z, 2X and 2Z, just to confuse you. Options 1X and 1Z can be chosen for either building option 1A or 1B, and options 2X and 2Z can be chosen for either options 2A or 2B. So the ones can correlate to each other and the twos. Option 1X does not address any of the site priorities that we've just talked about. Options 1Z, 2X and 2Z address both of those priorities, which are the traffic and congestion and the increased parking. So we'll show you what those look like. Existing site plan, obviously you can see the building here, your main entrance, Cribble Mill here, Germantown Pike here, and Mill Road. Admin building over here, you'll, you'll note that we are proposing to eliminate the admin building in all of our options to gain a little bit of parking. So option 1X, which can be chosen for 1A or 1B, you can see the new pool and the deletion of the administrative building in favor of some parking. What this does is it gets us a net of minus six parking spaces. But we're not having to park the administrative, uh, the district administration people over here. So if that's 50 people, then we now have a gain of 44 parking spaces for the high school campus because we're moving the district admin offsite. So keep that in mind as we move forward. So this does not address any of our priorities, does not improve any of your traffic congestion, does not really increase parking significantly, even if it's, you know, only 44 spaces, that's not enough to, to really quantify anything. Option 1Z adds a parking lot in that front grass area. So we now have increased parking. We're a net 106 spaces above where we currently are, plus the spaces that we're not utilizing for the district admin. And what we're trying to do here is to solve the traffic flow. And you can see a little bit of a red line coming around here. This would be your bus loop. So we're trying to set this up so that there's an entrance and an exit for buses only. They would come in and drop off in the back. And then your parents would come in through here and probably loop the way around this lot and come back out that entrance. So one entrance for students and staff and parents, and one entrance for buses. So we're, we're starting to improve the traffic flow, eliminate the congestion, and we're increasing the, the parking spaces. Option 2X, you can see the building footprint of option 2A here. We're now creating a full parking lot over here, and we can gain a little bit more space because we don't have the, the west wing here. So we're starting to gain parking spaces. We're adding a little bit back here beyond the pool. The same situation with the buses. The buses would come in through this one entrance point, loop around and drop off around here and go back out onto Cribble Mill. And then the parents would come in through here, probably loop their way around, and come back out on the same entrance. So again, separating buses from parents and students, but not fully separating buses, parents and students. And in this case, we have a net of 63 extra spaces plus whatever you're not using for the district admin. The last option, the big difference here is a connection to Mill Road. So this truly solves the separation of buses, parents and students. It brings buses in off of Mill Road, loops them around and brings them back out. It brings parents in off of that main entrance here, loops them around and brings them back out the same entrance. And then students can come in totally separately and park over here and not have to deal with parents or buses. And this one, I, I don't know if, if you noticed the, oop, I'm going to get ahead. The previous versions had students crossing across where the buses would be coming in and out. This last option creates a little bit of a boulevard through here so that students and staff can walk across there safely without having to go across either the parents or the buses. So that was a net of 154 spaces plus whatever the admin space would, would gain us. Those are our site options. And again, option 2X and 2Z can be fit. I know we're showing the building options here, but they could realistically be for either option 2A or 2B. Now, a couple of quick videos here, and there's really not a lot to show on option 1A or 1B, but you can see with this one, we're adding the pool in the back here. So you'll start to see that appear there. No other real changes besides the district admin changing to parking. Option 1B, you'll start to see a little bit more of that parking lot, but the same building addition would be the pool in the back there. And then you can see how this converts to parking, and you can start, start to see how things can be separated on the site. Now, when we get into these next two videos, we'll, we'll start to talk a little bit about phasing, and we need to kind of work through these a little bit further, but you'll start to see the beginnings of how things would be constructed on the site. So with this option, we would have building in the new pool first, then knocking down the, the B wing and building the classroom addition, then knocking down the west wing and building the performing arts. So it starts to set itself up where we can build classrooms, use those for swing space, and then build the rest of the additions. Option 2B is very similar. You can see we'll start to build the pool first, then build the classroom addition off the front of the building, and you can use that for swing space. And then we knock down both the B wing and the west wing and build the performing arts spaces. So those are our four options that we are working through right now. We do have one slide here that just shows all of the priorities, our priority group one and two, and which ones are addressed. You can see a lot of them have all four checked off. The internal traffic flow, not as successful on 1A and 1B. The steam center, we didn't really talk about that. Steam center is kind of a vague term, and you could say that we're moving the fab lab closer to the science areas. Therefore, we're getting a little bit of a steam center. So it is a partial, but it's not fully integrating science and arts and engineering altogether in one spot. So it's kind of for interpretation, and it is a priority two item. The auditorium obviously is only built new in 2A and 2B. Classrooms are being enlarged in that 1B option plus both of the, the new construction spaces. And then improvements to the performing arts spaces are happening in all but option 1A. Now what everybody's been waiting for. No pressure.
All right. Thanks, Devin. So as usual, Devin gets to show these nice images and visuals and videos, and I get to take you through a spreadsheet. So obviously, we've done a lot of work in terms of looking at the options, coming up with the most comprehensive budget that we can at this point. And keep in mind, this is still the conceptual phase of, of options here. But we do have quite a bit of breakdown that's not included on this slide. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of where the numbers are at this point. And the headings are very similar to what we've been trying to show you all along this process in terms of hard costs versus soft costs and what that means. So hard costs, again, are the actual dollars spent towards improvements, whether it's renovations, new construction, site improvements, those types of things. We also need to factor in the overall schedule for the project. So even if the board should decide in October, this is the selected route. This is the path forward. We're still looking at at least 12 months of design and bidding timeframe. So with that, we're, we're probably looking at not until about a late summer or perhaps even December of 2029 project. Now, obviously, that's still in development stages, but just to give you a reason why we need to consider if escalation is going to be a factor as part of our budget. So you'll see some costs for escalation as well in there. Soft costs include professional fees. They include anything with land development fees, local agency permits, inspections, and also contingency. So at this point, we do have a design and estimating contingency and also a construction contingency, each of 5% that are included in the budget. So what I also wanted to mention is we have, uh, the top category is what we feel will improve the building, just not only from a, a baseline perspective, but also through the options. We've also carved out on the bottom some, what we're calling additional scope for consideration. So with the improvements within the building, there are also limited architectural enhancements within the baseline situation. It's essentially new floors, new ceilings and paint. And really, if there are additional items requested such as casework or creating other spaces within the hallways, maybe removal of lockers and creation of small workspaces with countertops, those types of things. So we have a separate item down at the bottom for additional consideration. So for the baseline, uh, total project budget excluding any of the additional scope items, we're looking at just under $100 million, so about 99.4 million for the baseline improvements throughout the building. Okay? And again, that's really about 50% or so. Those costs are really driven by MEP systems upgrades. Okay? Option 1A then brings that hard, that, uh, total project budget estimate at about 115 million. And then option 1B at 122. 2A up to about 150 million, and option 2B up to 156 million. So again, we are as comprehensive as we can be at this point. We have our budget broken down into categories, both for hard costs and for soft costs. We do have that breakdown. If there are any specific questions over the next several weeks specifically related to scope or budget, we can certainly answer those questions. One thing that we also included down for consideration, that's where we have our phasing costs. And obviously, phasing at this point is still not framed out. We have some ideas of what phasing might look like, but essentially what that would be, we've allowed for up to 20 modular classrooms. Hopefully, we do not need that amount. Hopefully, we can get creative maybe with some existing spaces and use of maybe a limited amount of modular classrooms or temporary classrooms. So we're definitely going to be focusing on that number. As you can see, it's $9 million for temporary classrooms or for phasing considerations. So it, it is a considerable amount of money, and you'll see that throughout all four options. We are, whether or not we're adding or demolishing areas of the building, each one of these options, including the baseline, will interrupt a bank of classrooms to complete the renovations. So some consideration needs to be made in every scenario for some type of phasing costs. Okay? Also down there, we had a line item for various furniture fixtures and equipment for new loose items or for other classroom technology items that maybe would be owner-provided, not necessarily part of the electrical contract for baseline upgrades. Also, Devin just went through the exterior improvements, and you'll see that depending on if you like some of the ideas for additional parking with that lot B, which was kind of the, the wedge-shaped lot in front of the building, or the extension onto Mill Road, those are additional considerations above and beyond what we're considering baseline site improvement scope for parking and access for each of the floor plans, if that makes sense. Okay. Yes, that's it. Yes. Yes. So the baseline does include demolition of Farina and the construction of that lot A, I think it is, associated with it. So it's any asbestos abatement, demolition and site improvement for vacating and demolishing Farina. At this point, it's not determined what exactly the phasing or the modular solution will be. It's not a permanent installation within the building, a permanent improvement. Therefore, we don't typically consider that a hard cost. Again, if there are opportunities somehow to reclaim space within the existing building, and we can certainly reduce that number, I don't know if we're going to eliminate it by any means, but if we can reduce it, we certainly will. But really, because it's not a permanent improvement to the project, it's considered down below. Okay. Thank you.
Devin, Josh, thank you very much for all the effort and, and time put in to put the presentation together and your delivery here this evening. Well, if we can, members of the board, we can start taking some questions, but please know that we do expect to have time set aside at next Tuesday's meeting for any follow-up questions if you have them, okay? Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, I want to reiterate, thank you so much. This was super helpful and really exciting. But for me to think about this for next week, to ask my questions, I just have a couple. So Josh, can I start with you? You said something about time to completion, and you said summer to December of 2029. Did that, I wasn't sure what that meant. Was it actual time to completion? Was it actual time to completion of the project?
Yes, so timeframe for implementation of the renovations additions. And I explained that just to indicate that the escalation factor that we figured typically takes that timeframe to the midpoint of construction is how we factor in the escalation for the budget. So I just wanted to give you a timeframe of even in October. If the board says, okay, let's proceed, there's, you know, a year of design bidding so that by March of '27 is when we would essentially be, you know, ready to go.
So 2029 is breaking, I still don't understand.
2029 would be completion.
Completion of any of these options?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then, then I guess it's to Devin, if that's okay. When we went through the options, the building options, was, is option 2B the only option that addresses when you have to go, that eliminates when you have to go outside into that courtyard and then through the other door to go back in? Is that the only option that eliminates that?
It's the only one that fully addresses it because we don't have the stair in option 2A. Now, we could look to maybe put something similar in there and help, you know, that situation. But 2B does address it the best.
Fully, okay. And then that courtyard, that's that space, that outdoor space that's there now remains.
Correct.
Right? Does 2B address any renovation in there or it's just, it does?
Yeah, I think there's likely some improvements probably in anything from 2A and 2B, certainly. And we can look to do something in 1A and 1B because we're doing the lunch and learn program just adjacent to that.
Okay.
So we'll probably want to add some walkways in there and improve that space in all the options.
That's helpful. That's going to help me think about this. And then talking about looking at the draw, sorry, away from the mic. Looking at the drawings again, the one option which I think is also 2B. Wait, I'm in the wrong space here. Nope, sorry. It's the site options. It's 2Z.
I told you to be confused by it.
So confused. I'm not. I just have to get my letters down. 2Z is the only one that has the separate student entrance way, right?
Correct.
Okay, so my suggestion is for the next meeting, if you can, color that in a different color, kind of like how you did the parents and the buses. I just, to highlight that because there's nothing really there right now that indicates that. Yeah, that was helpful.
No problem at all.
And then I think I just have one other thing for now. I can't remember, so thank you.
We can come, we certainly can come back to you. Anyone else to my right, Glenn?
Could you go over the, I guess, the last four slides on pertaining to the options on the pool? You know, that are in the presentation. Are you prepared to do that?
So yes, we're prepared. I need to, I can pull those up here as well while Josh takes the mic.
So just so everybody knows, at a, I believe it was the June meeting or July meeting of the board, there was a request to look at a comparison between new construction of a pool and renovation of the pool. We had the design team put together some information related to that. And given all the information we're providing you this evening, we wanted to make sure that you had it. Okay, but the second thing is maybe to Ms. Graff's point, let us, let us answer some questions on the initial presentation and then let's go back to the pool and have them present that. Are we, are we okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. So I have a separate, second question. Are any of these four options any more challenging relative to zoning or encroaching on the setback spaces? Do you foresee any?
So that's a great question. We did meet preliminarily with War Sister Township. There is, and I'll, you can look at site option one, sorry, 2Z. I confused myself. 2Z brings the building in a little bit further in. So we are building within that setback. But it does not appear to be a challenge currently. They could always change their minds. The, all of the options are now putting parking within the setback, including 1A, because we're tearing down the district building and putting parking there. So there are some zoning hurdles on all of the options. But based on initial feedback, it does not seem like it's going to be a huge issue. But you never know with zoning.
Yep. One more question. So some of the options have, I think, 1A and 1B have the administrative, well, all four have administrative building being torn down. But 1 has it basically being relocated offsite, I assume, and renting space. I don't know, didn't really address that. But some of the options has it being relocated to within the new construction. So explain that, please.
Yeah, let me clarify that. That in 2B, you saw, let me just pull that up actually. In 2B, you saw administrative space. That is actually building administrative. So the space here is the space that we currently have as the building administration here. That's moving over there to get that secure entry point here. So that's your reception area. That's your principal office. All of the administrative spaces that function for the high school.
So all four options assume that the school district administrative building has moved off campus.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, so thank you very much for this presentation. I do want to also note that I appreciate you removing the background on the slides because they are much easier for those of us to see. There were just a couple of questions looking at the cost estimates. When we, when you talked about interior renovations, I think I heard you say, Josh, that it includes new floors, new ceilings, and new paint. But we include any type of finishes or casework as what we're calling additional scope. Is that an accurate?
Okay. Yeah, so the architectural finishes, ceilings, paint, and some flooring really under the baseline is all that's being tackled.
Okay. And can you, can you remind me on the contingency? What is, what is in there for contingency that we should probably add it to the spreadsheet? But it's not noted as the percentages of the contingency.
Contingency in this phase is 5% design estimating and 5% of what we're going to have as construction phase contingency. So it's based on hard costs, estimated hard costs at this point.
Okay. And then further down where you show the parking lot improvements, I think I heard you say that the site options, the site options that start with a 1 can go with 1A or 1B design. And then the site options that start with a 2 can go to 2A or 2B. But in the cost structure, you have the same 2.8 million for 1A, 1B, and then 2.85 for 2A, 2B. Are you telling me that the additional extensive nature of the 2Z site option is the same price as the 2X site option? I just, I feel like maybe 2X because it doesn't have the Mill Road extension. It also doesn't have quite as extensive of a parking lot in the front. And it doesn't have the promenade across the parking lots. Like, there's a number of things that are significantly, I would think, cost significantly more in option 2Z. And yet the pricing is the same. And you could look at that offline and just get back to us.
We do have site costs for each option that are reflective of, I'll say, the base options for each, whether it's 2.
X or Z?
2X. Basically, the 2Z option with the Mill Road extension, that's what would be included, that extension under the 2.85 for option 2A and 2B. Under option 1A and 1B, that 2.8 would be for that parking lot B, which is that piece at the front of the building.
So that includes, that's not the, that's not the 1X option. It's the 1.
No, so the baseline 1X would be included in the site number above. So when you see up on the top portion, site improvements, those numbers, you can see in option 2A, they jump to 17, almost and a half million, which would, which would be reflective of those.
Additional site pieces that have to go into that.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we might need to just put a footnote that basically says site options include 2Z or 1Z, depending on which option you're in, right? I just, because it's considerably more site work for 2Z and 1Z than whatever the X options are. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, yes.
And then I guess the other question I wanted to ask you was, when we, when you presented the designs, there's a number of design options that have a reduced number of classrooms. How have we assessed whether reducing the number of classrooms impacts the typical school day and the number of classrooms in use? I guess I'm getting to, does this still provide every teacher their own classroom? And are these two classrooms that were losing classrooms that were not in use? At least, and how are we going to, how are we going to assess that, I guess?
Right, so under these options, the IPC discussion is not in play. So yes, these would be individual classrooms.
Right.
And as far as how many are needed, I mean, that's been an ongoing exercise with the administration to make sure that what is planned is adequate for the program.
So I think that, I'm going to say it this way. I think we need to have some assessment that gets us to a place where the board could at some point here in the near future feel confident that losing two classrooms or four classrooms or whatever the numbers are is going to not impact our educational programming. However, we need, I don't know how we do that, but we need to do that somehow. And then the other question I have is on the drawings, on the first floor, we show net classroom is maybe minus 2. And then on the second floor, we show net classroom is minus 2. Is that minus 2 for each floor or is it minus 2 for that entire design?
That's total.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to my right? Seeing none to my left, Ms. Cancri?
My question goes actually along with Ms. Graff is that the flow of traffic, right? Our biggest conversation was where's our education? Like, where's the ELA? Where's the math? I know we're going to have STEAM, but we're not really having STEAM. I think it may be helpful exactly that, having that educational integration involved in here. So if it's able that the administration could just touch base and say like, okay, this is going to be where all math will be. You know, this is where all ELA will be. There's where tech ed is going to be. Tech ed will be now closer to the Fab Lab. Where before the tech was all the way down here, Fab Lab was there. Pottery art, the art area, just because that was truly what we wanted to get from this too. And if you're going to create a new classroom wing in the last option, what is that classroom wing? Is it something specifically that's been identified by the administration, high level? We know it's got more to have discussion. That just will allow us, because I do think that flow is really important to understand. Like, when people start to get concentrated in their, their core classes, you know, it gets, that reduces their, that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a great point and something that we're certainly cognizant of and we'll meet with the staff to go through that. What this exercise does is gets us the quantity of classrooms so that we can then go through and program these spaces here, these spaces here. So we want to make sure we have the number of classrooms so we can get the budgets together. And then we can go through and kind of sort which spaces go in the addition, which spaces need to move from existing classrooms around to make it more efficient. But it is a great conversation.
And then I would just say for the administration, I do want us to put in here into the timelines, a discussion about finance and the finance committee, and then putting it also into our work sessions and about borrowing. Just putting that into our timelines.
Yeah, so we do have a more extensive timeline. This is basically.
Just preliminary what they're bringing, but okay.
So there's a timeline that includes property committee meetings, finance committee meetings, meetings before the full board with respects to the financing of any of these options as we take the direction from the board.
Great, thank you. This is great work. I appreciate it. It's hard to do four options and the Z and the X and all of that. So I know this was a lot of work on your team, both teams. So I do, it is noted and I thank you for this. It's, it's really important for us to make a decision for this. Thank you.
Other question, Ms. Perdue?
Thank you for the presentations. I have two questions just to help me review some of this and come back next week. In reference to, first I'll step back with the timeline that was provided on the first slide. What I don't see is any information and maybe it's in here in reference to a discussion on the Farina building, right? And maybe it'll be discussed at finance. I'm just trying to gauge for at what point is there, will we have to make a decision about Farina? And also, when can we expect to receive a cost assessment for that?
That's a great question. We can add that into a more detailed timeline.
Okay, so then we'll know, I mean, will we have that information before October?
Before when?
October.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And then my next one, I think there was in this, in one of the earlier slides, maybe Slide 3, there was reference made to replacing the surveillance cameras. I guess in the high school part of the baseline school. I'm just wondering, when was the last time that that was replaced? Because I thought we had something recently, so I just wanted to understand. I don't know if.
Full scale, it's been some time. We are in a replacement cycle. So there have been some that have been replaced each of the last successive years. But the entire system, it has been a significant period of time.
So then we're looking to, are we looking to do a full scale? If we're doing replacement, because I'm just thinking it's like, I don't know if I understand what you mean by we've been in a, because if you're doing it, are you doing it like by wing or what? So, and this is considering full scope replacement?
Correct. We have added cameras. We've replaced ones that had technical issues, but we have not done a full-scale replacement in about maybe six years or so, give or take.
And I guess.
So if I could, sorry. So this is more, the security camera system is more than just the actual cameras themselves. So it's the version of the software. It's the, it's the head end, the ability to storage. So that's the more comprehensive approach to all of that.
Okay, and that was just what I wanted to check because I'm thinking if it's software, usually there comes, you know, there's the lifespan with it. So I was just wondering why, if we're thinking this will be, this is something that we're doing soon, do we need a full scope replacement? That was where my question was going.
At that point, we would be doing MEP upgrades throughout the entire school. So it would make sense at that point to do a full-scale upgrade.
Okay, and then can I just ask quickly for the timeline in reference? So I think there's two public forums that are listed on here. Can I just have an understanding of, if we know now, if we don't know, maybe next week? If I can hear really maybe the scope of that public forum, are they? And then like the audience also. Is it like, I know we've had somewhere we've met with just, I think it was Mill Road, community members. I'm just wondering if we happen to know or is this just a general public forum? Like what we've had at the library or?
Yeah, it's our intent to have an open public forum similar to what we've done in the past. It would be designed to really present what's already kind of been presented to the board, but give an opportunity for members of the public to provide us feedback. And then for us to then bring that feedback back to the board and actually back to the design team for some considerations so that we can put the best, you know, set of plans forward, given all the consideration.
Okay, thank you. And I think next week when I come back, I may have some questions in reference to, I guess, the phasing and approach and maybe how like disruptions maybe to the school. And I think you talked about that, all that costs is included, but also to the neighboring, the neighbors and our neighbors around. the neighbors and our neighbors around, but I just wanted to get a little bit more on that, thank you.
Yeah, to your point about the neighbors, I think if we start getting closer to a decision point where we're saying we would like to use site option that includes the Mill Road piece, or includes, you know, some other potential major disruption, we certainly bring that group of folks together. They were very helpful in the last conversation we had with them, so certainly, it's something we'll do.
Are there any other questions, members my left, Ms. Thiel?
Thank you for this, I just have a handful of questions. The first question that I do have, and I know that we already established that all designs mean that Farina, we need to discuss what happens with Farina and where that goes. The basement or the lower floor of Farina houses, like, I'm going to say this wrong, because I, yes, the server room. Was that factored into anywhere here? Yes, okay.
Yeah, that would be programmed to be moved to the high school.
Perfect, thank you, so that was the first one. I just wanted to also second kind of what Ms. Graff and Ms. Kanker said about just understanding, and this might be touching point with the administration, just the loss of those two classrooms and the impact that would have on our staff and teachers, just to make, I would be interested in just knowing that information. To the best of the ability, obviously, since we're talking about 2029. And the last, nope, and just, this is actually probably more for Dr. Zerby, the discussion for finance and Farina and a plan moving forward, would that be, you responded to Ms. Perdue, that there would be some information by October. Can you just tell me, would that be like thoughts of renting space off campus or something like that, does that make sense? Like what can we expect? Because it's a long way away, what can we expect by October?
Yeah, I think what you'll find, at the very minimum, is you will get, here's what a, here's what the the Farina relocation for leasing spaces needed. So it's the next number of square feet, and then we will have quotes like we've done in the past of cost per square fees, a feat of leasing commercial space. And then, you know, try to talk to potential options, I mean, we're not gonna be able to build anything. But leasing of space in close proximity to the high school is probably the best option that we have, if space is available. And that's gonna be, and that's gonna be, you know, part of the challenge. And so there's a lot of commercial space available, and the prices are actually pretty good. The issue is finding the right space that, you know, accommodates the administrative staff, but also is in proximity, you know, central to the district. So those are the things we're thinking about, but we already have former numbers, we will work with a realtor to get an updated set of numbers, and that's the concept that we would provide forward.
Excellent, okay, thank you, that's what I was wondering. And then lastly, just about the different designs, all put this student commons in the library space. Does that, I'm going to guess that that has an impact on the size of the library and the storage availability of the library? Has there been a discussion about the educational impact with the library and that sort, and the commons there, has that been discussed?
That discussion has not occurred with the librarian to date.
Okay, I would just be interested in some discussion on what, and if there's a difference, is there a difference in the different designs on the impact on that library space?
The only difference that you see is with 2B, it pulls the student commons up to the upper level and moves where the stacks would be and the office would be down at the lower level.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
The others, it takes that space that we use for presentations
Yep.
and turns that into a commons.
Great, thank you very much, thank you.
Any other questions on, Ms. Austin?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I have a question about costs, and I apologize if it's been asked, but the new classrooms that we're looking at in some of the options, does the cost include furnishing those as well?
The furnishings would be down below, under that FFNE, that's furniture, fixtures and equipment. So again, without being certain of how much would be salvaged from this building, we didn't want to indicate a certain amount, that's why it's down at the bottom, but it is factored into that overall with additional scope considerations.
Okay, thank you. And my question on Farina and then looking at something to lease, is that the short-term plan, and then with the long-term, looking to build something at some point later, or?
The, there's, and I'm not the expert on this, but it's my understanding that we lose the ability to build anything new once we construct or do construction on the high school and don't include the construction of an administration building connected to a school building. So the future of building, for the admin building is, according to the rules now, you would not be able to do it. But you could lease space and you could certainly buy a building as well.
Okay.
Yeah, you're allowed to buy a building and renovate it, but not build a new building.
Okay, thank you. And my question with the option 1B, just on the classroom size, where it says it's enlarging the classrooms to 850 square feet, and I noticed that change comes on the second floor. Is, are the first floor classrooms already right-sized, or I thought they were also undersized?
The only identified ones were on the second floor above that, the west wing area. So those eight classrooms are the only small classrooms, and that's why we're only addressing that on the second floor.
Okay, that's good, thank you. And kind of piggybacking on Ms. Kanker's comment about where the different classrooms are, you know, what sticks in my head is, you know, looking over here in the east wing, I'm noticing there's no proposed specifically change to where the art classrooms are. And, you know, we did have concerns as a board about placement and not having any outside light in those rooms. So I just want to make sure that that is addressed with this proposal, that we get some outside light into those art rooms. And and then if we do the, make the library into the commons for the lunch and learn, is that then enough space to accommodate such a program? Or are we then also trying to look at other spaces kind of in between? Does that solve the problem for the lunch and learn building this commons?
Well, it creates the additional needed space for students to congregate. It's something we don't have at this point, all we have is the commons and the cafeteria. So this creates another opportunity, as well as the fact that they would be traversing over through the courtyard. So the idea with some renovations and walkways, benches, picnic tables, things of that nature, it could create those additional spaces. But in lunch and learn, the idea is you'd be using the whole building.
Right.
But the fact that we don't have a lot of spaces for congregation, this is the best option to make that a reality.
Thank you, and just also then with the performing arts space, I just noticed in some of the options and that the band room is smaller, it includes a music classroom. And I guess I just want to make sure or suggest that whatever we decide, or whatever we seem to be leaning towards, that the performing arts staff get a detailed view of this. I'm just noticing things like changing rooms are still across the hall near the bathroom, I'm, some logistical concerns I have with this, with this current plan, so just maybe they should get a video of what it would look like, and so that they can go through with their needs and just make sure that all their concerns are addressed. And we also talked about dual purpose, some of the spaces. And I think I see in some of the plans that could be used, like to have the chorus room be a dance studio, or, you know, something like that, where you can use rooms efficiently and still allow for that practice.
Yeah, Ms. Austin, those are great comments. And as you're well aware, we've been developing this over the summer. And our plan now is to, as our teachers come back for opening ceremonies tomorrow, we'll start putting that schedule in place and getting the input, not only just from the librarian, but also from, you know, the music department and anyone else that's impacted through this process.
I will just note that those layouts are very much a placeholder, so we still do need to meet with everyone and really design those types of spaces, so.
Right, yes.
There is presented publicly, because it's not gonna look like that.
Right, right, thank you. And then just an option 2B that says it does, it does improve the internal traffic load, so then does it eliminate, is that where the students have to go down to go back up, is that what that addresses?
The goal of that one is to create that central stair, so that people in the midwing can then use that central stair to get up or down to go to the other areas of the building.
So it should reduce travel time across the building?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that was all I have for now, thank you.
Are there any other, yeah, we want, just so everybody remembers, we're gonna go finish questions on what was presented, and then we're gonna go back to the pool. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody's out, so Ms. Graff, go ahead.
Yeah, can you just clarify, because the way the drawing looks to me, I still think that there is not a connector between the midwing and the east wing, is that correct?
That's correct, so the idea is to go across the top of the midwing, when you're on the second floor, down that central stair that's close to the library, and then over.
So you would come back from here to here to go over here?
Correct, so you don't have to go outside, and then you also don't have to go all the way around to get around.
But you're not going all the way to here, you're just going halfway.
Correct, yeah.
But there won't, so the way the design is, currently, there's no addition on the midwing to create a second set of stairs in the middle.
Correct.
Here.
We're not infilling that courtyard space in these options.
Okay, but you could have an exit out of the midwing that goes to the courtyard?
Yes.
That would get you halfway?
Yes.
Just want to clarify, like it doesn't actually solve the second floor to connector problem?
Right, there's no direct connection from midwing to east wing.
Right.
But there's a closer way to get around.
Does that answer your question? Right. Because it seemed like the answer was yes, but the answer is, you don't have to go all the way out to the west wing. There's not, there's stairs in the middle, but they're not on the midwing.
It's improving.
It's improving, yes, just to clarify. And then I guess the other question I just had is, I guess it's a little bit of semantics, but I've heard a couple of people ask the same question, and I just want to clarify if, if in the cost assessment, the items that are listed at the bottom that say additional scope for consideration, if there's items in there that are not for consideration, in other words, if we are required to have classrooms that are modular for phasing and to get this project from start to finish, they're not optional additional scope, which is how it seems to be worded. And I would definitely agree with others, and Ms. Perdue particularly, that they should be in the top base scope option. And maybe you make a second, another category that says, you know, additional expenses, because it's an expenditure that we have to pay for, it's not an option, which is how it is appearing when you have it down here like this. Like the parking lot improvements, can we not do any of those options?
Right, so right now, the demolition of Farina is in the baseline scope, as is the construction of that parking lot, for example. If even under option 1, we need to then adjust the parking for where the natorium would be placed, so that is a must. So that's why you see some site costs already included under each option. Only some are optional with the additional parking lot B, or the additional access out to Mill Road.
So for example, I don't think that furniture in new classrooms is optional. Maybe I need to be more clear. Like, we will need furniture in the classrooms that we build. So I don't think we should be putting it in the bottom, because it is actually a hard cost. I mean, you can say it's not a construction cost, it's not a building construction cost, it's not a design cost, but it is a cost the district needs to cover. So I just, I think we need to either put a portion of those up above, or just make clear to the board that when we're talking about costs, we need to be looking at the number on the bottom of the chart, not halfway through.
Sure, understood in both for the phasing and the FFNE, that would typically be included under soft costs, so we can just add line items for those.
Yeah, whatever way you think is best, but I think that we need to, the board's gonna need to know the real costs.
Go ahead. Can we call something additional anticipated costs, and then have that as a category, and then however, just so we know, so we know that they are, we need to anticipate those costs.
We can do that.
Or maybe we just list it as the things that you have, if you want to, and I don't know. But I just think we need to be very clear about, the cost is not, you know, for the baseline scope, you might be able to get away with not including any of those things below the line, but when you get over to 2B, I don't think that you can get away with not including anything below that line. I don't think you can really build 2B for 156 million, unless you're telling me that you can, that's I guess my clarification question. You guys can think about it, you don't have to answer today, but I'm gonna ask you the same question next week. And if it is a, no, they have to be in there, then don't tell me it's 156 million, because it's really not. Right, we need to know what the real numbers are, and we need to present them like that, so people are clear. Thanks.
Thank you. Glenn?
So just a comment to that, I don't see option as additional scope for consideration. I don't interpret that as an option. There are additional costs that go along with each of those, just to be fair. 1A and 1B versus 2A and 2B, I just noticed while looking at this, for the fitness area in 1A and 1B, there's area for the trainer, training office or trainer's office, the training area, which I assume is for rehab, I'm not sure. And then there's also two locker rooms. I don't see those in 2A and 2B, so where's that space go?
So all of that would eventually be in the same space. So you can see the fitness center in option 2A and 2B are a little bit larger than 1A and 1B. So we need to divide that space and include those spaces.
So you're assuming all those functions get done in that larger space? And there's, where is it planned? I see new locker space for the Poeria, but where is it assumed the locker space will occur for the other sports?
All in the existing locker rooms.
So that's not in the scope in any of these, correct?
That's how I interpret. We're doing baseline upgrades to those, but.
Okay, but that, so that is included in the baseline?
The baseline, yes, some finishes are upgraded, yeah.
Which is not really reflected in this color coding?
Well, the baseline is all white, so everything is baseline.
Okay. I follow the logic. Right, thanks.
Thank you, any other questions on stuff that was already presented? So now that we have no other questions on that, we're gonna ask, the board has a copy of the presentation that has, I believe, is it two slides? Three slides related to the pool. And so we'll put them up on the screen and we'll go through that. And again, this was a request to determine the difference between new construction pool versus renovation of the pool.
Sure, so with the help of the administration and staff, we did put together just a brief slide here for pros and cons of each option. I don't know that you want to read through each of the items here just for the sake of brevity, but needless to say, a new pool facility would afford greater space, greater ADA friendliness, larger deck space, eight lanes in lieu of six for competitions and so forth. Obviously, as we know, it will cost more, a new pool construction will cost more than a renovation. But again, taking into account some of the other advantages of a pool, we just wanted to lay out everything for you. The other thing a new natorium space could do, and as we're talking about phasing and working through phasing, is it would potentially provide an opportunity to reclaim the old natorium space once it's filled in as some temporary classrooms, temporary swing space. So that is also another advantage of looking at a new natorium facility. For the last property meeting, we did run through a side-by-side comparison, and I hope you have a printout, because I can barely read what's on the screen. So basically, what we wanted to show was, in order to obtain a similar program with spaces including a pool and classroom spaces that would be impacted by the construction or renovation of a pool, what the cost comparison would be. what the cost comparison would be. So on the top portion of both of those spreadsheets would be related to the natorium space itself. On the left is the cost for the new space, and on the right would be the cost to renovate the existing space. And as you can see, and not unexpected, there's there's certainly a delta between the two. There's about a $5 million delta between new construction and renovation of existing. The new construction would be larger. It would be about 14,200 square feet. The existing space is about 10,200. Obviously, that plays a lot into those cost differences. But again, it does provide some opportunities for other educational spaces within the existing pool footprint. And obviously, like I said, some perhaps phasing opportunities as we move through the building. So without going into excruciating detail, we just wanted to provide you with that one page comparison of cost between those two options.
And the reason that this is so important is, as you know, aside from the baseline scope only, every other option includes, you know, a new pool. So it's important for you to know that if you wanted to do something beyond the baseline, we're recommending that the pool be newly constructed so that it not only addresses the stuff for our competitive athletes and for our physical education program and for the community, but also creates that, I think, the most important part, the swing space, which helps potentially reduce the $9 million that's sitting down in the other options or other costs to consider at this point in time. And that's that's the cost. That's what we have to work out. So if we know that ultimately, there's a there's a commitment to saying, you know what, this makes sense to move forward with a pool, that gets us in in a much better position to reduce other costs in in some of the other options. Other questions, comments on the pool or on anything else that we presented here this evening from the team? And please, seeing none, please know that the team will be back next Tuesday with answers to some of the questions, or if not all the questions that you have here. We'll get, we'll provide any detail that occurs between now and then as an update, and certainly we'll take questions as the board seeks to gain any more information on this. Thank you very much, design team, for all your efforts. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Madam President, so then next week, we would have basically the Methacton High School Campus Planning Team back to take any questions from the presentations. We have a list of reports, as we normally would. You can see there's some advisements as listed. I will take a public comment on board action items, and then we'll move on to fiscal items. Ms. Steffi?
There are three fiscal items for consideration, 9A list of bills, 9B Treasury report, and 9C budgetary transfers. There are no budgetary transfers for the month of August.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Other questions from members of the board to my left on any of the financial items? To my right? Seeing none at this time. Thank you, Ms. Steffi. We'll move on to personnel items. Dr. Sorgeni.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, for the consideration of the board this month. Personnel items are as follows. One resignation professional, Ashley Alvaranga, biology instructor at the high school. We thank Ashley for her dedicated service to the students of Methacton as a teacher, coach, and sponsor. There are three resignations classified, Robert Mitchell, monitoring assistant at the high school, and Megan Delaney, office assistant at Skyview. We thank Robert and Megan for their dedicated service to the students of Methacton. And one resignation for retirement, Antoinette Jones, paraprofessional at Skyview after 15 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton. We're grateful to Tony for always going above and beyond and meeting the needs of the students with whom she worked, and we wish her the very best in her well deserved retirement. There are multiple job descriptions, including four associated with our coaching positions at the high school and Arcola. There are no changes to the function of any of these positions that will take place as a result of the job descriptions. These are just in keeping with our efforts to continue to update job descriptions across all of our positions in a cycle. Also, there is the job description for the district wide belonging and climate coordinator and the building belonging liaison positions. There's one employment administrator, Ms. Lori DeAndre, supervisor of special education at Arcola and Skyview. Ms. DeAndre brings a wealth of experience to Methacton, having most recently served as the Assistant Director of Student Services and Supervisor of Special Education in the Centennial School District. In that role, she oversaw special education and gifted programming, led professional development efforts, ensured compliance with state and federal regulations, and worked closely with school leaders to meet student needs. Her prior leadership experience includes supervisory roles in the Pottstown and also North Penn School Districts, where she played an integral role in inclusive programming, the development of new support programs and IEP compliance. She began her career as a learning support teacher with classroom experience across both elementary and secondary levels in math and special education. Ms. DeAndre holds a supervisory certificate in special education and is currently completing her principal certification as well. She also holds multiple level two teaching certifications and an autism endorsement, bringing with her a strong foundation in instructional practice, student advocacy, and special education leadership, and we're excited to have her join the Methacton family. There are four employments professional, Kirsten Shorley, Amy Kemp, and Allison Haslett, elementary instructors at Skyview, and Madeline Slow, school psychologist. We welcome Kirsten, Amy, Allison, and Madeline to the Methacton family. There are eight employments classified, five paraprofessionals, Deborah Brunner at Woodland, Claudia Elefante at Arcola, Eric Gunderson at the high school, Michelle Cochinovitz at Worcester, and Haley Bauer at Skyview. Two communication student interns, Janet James and Alexander Eels, to continue in the positions for the first semester of the 2526 school year. And I have been made aware that on the agenda, it does say January 25, so that will be changed to January 26. And Chrishell Schlenker, personal care assistant at Arcola. We welcome Deborah, Claudia, Eric, Michelle, Haley, and Chrishell to the Methacton family, and we thank Janet and Alexander for continuing in the intern positions for the first semester. There are two changes of status, professional Jennifer McGregor from paraprofessional at Arrowhead to part time reading specialist at Eagleville, and Brian Robbins from social studies instructor at the high school to teacher on assignment, assistant principal at the high school. We thank Jennifer and Brian for taking on these new roles. There are three changes of status classified. Catherine Massev from part time bus assistant to casual on call, and Melanie Cotter and Jennifer Smith, both from part time paraprofessionals at Eagleville to full time paraprofessionals at Eagleville. We thank Catherine, Melanie, and Jennifer for taking on these new roles. There is one uncompensated leave professional, Kelly Rife, instructional intervention specialist at Woodland for the dates listed. One uncompensated leave classified, Kristen Bar Jones, personal care assistant at Arcola, also for the dates listed. There are supplemental contracts for summer math course instruction, for mentors, instructional software support specialists, curriculum and program coordinators, work in the curriculum instruction and assessment department, coaches, sponsors, and a room movement. There is one addition to the classified substitute list, Brianna Loube, casual custodian on call. We welcome Brianna. And then there is the addition of Ryan Payone as a lifeguard for community education, and we thank Ryan for taking on that role. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgeni. Any questions to members to my right? To my left, Ms. Perdue?
I do have one in reference to the resignation, I believe, as the biology teacher. I mean, it seemed like it's not a great time in general, just because school is going to be starting. How are we doing? Because I don't see a replacement currently, so I just wanted to follow up on that resignation.
We were able to fill that position internally and move forward without that position.
Okay, thanks. I'll follow up at committee.
Ms. Steel?
Hi, thank you. I just have a real quick question for about the part time reading specialist position, because I do remember seeing that it had been under review. Was, and what's a replacement? Did it replace a full time position or a part time position?
It replaced a part time position, so it's part time for part time.
Part time for part time. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Austin?
Hi, thank you. I know we are, we did change for the belonging and climate facilitator, the reports too. Can we talk a little bit about that, please?
Certainly. We had received feedback from members of our board, as well as from members of a school community group with respects to the original proposed reporting process. And we had taken that into consideration and decided that we would all be best served if the position would report to the Director of People's Services.
Thank you. And I had a question about the student interns for communications. I just was wondering if we, are they hired for a set number of hours every week, or is it just what they're able to work? I was just wondering how flexible that is. And then my next question is, I noticed that they're through January or to January 23. So if they're seeing, like, is the goal then to get a younger intern then for the next year to, okay?
Yes, absolutely. That will allow, as they are entering the end of their senior year, us to move forward with likely junior candidates the following year, or in the second semester, and then through summer and the first semester of next year.
Okay, and and the hours, like, what are, I was just curious what their hours are like?
They have an established number of hours. It's something the communications department has worked out with the individual student interns, and we do have that money budgeted for.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other question? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about the belonging and climate facilitator position. My first question, and I so I guess my first question should be, has, was this job description reviewed by the education committee?
It was not.
So is it possible for us to have, and maybe I should ask my education committee chairperson, if you would like the opportunity to review this position as it's now been described or posted or proposed to be posted?
We absolutely can.
So the reason I'm asking is because there's a number of things that I don't know, but there's a requirement for certification that's the beginning of the third year of the position. So I'm just wondering if we would want someone to be certified before the third year they're in the position? Again, that's something I would think that would be under the education committee purview. The other thing that stuck out to me is the list of items in terms of core responsibilities is very, very long. But one of the things was works with administration to implement best instructional practices. So again, I think that's education committee. I don't know what that actually means, but we may want you guys to spend a little time to define exactly what that sort of, what the interpretation of that is, and if it's educational related, to make sure you're on board with sort of how that gets played out.
I'm going to jump in real quick so that we don't have to come back to this later. I was, I had went down to ask how come that we're allowing a a time of three years to get certified? I wanted to hear a little bit of discussion about that, because that's still not sitting right with me.
If you guys have it, that'd be great. I don't.
Yeah, I think the, first of all, there are no PD certifications for this type of position. So that's, that's the, that's the first thing you should know. So, you know, we could certainly do, there are probably people with degrees, but not necessarily sort of PD certifications. And what we were trying to do was making sure that, A, we met the PD certification requirement and gave the individual, just like in a, I'll say in a previous job description, I think we had it for the K-12 DEI school council where they needed to receive by the third year of the DEI, we didn't have DEIB in there, but we had other, you know, equivalent certifications. So this is very similar to what we did for the school council position. And and this was, and again, you know, so everyone knows why this did not go through the education committee. It was, it was shared extensively through the, through the members of the board with, who provided feedback and the recommendations on the changes here. But we certainly can take it back through the committee.
I'm stuck on that because I understand we followed this for the previous role, which didn't go very well because we lost two people. So I want to make sure that we're setting this up to not have that outcome.
I think our logic in this sort of, like, saying the third year is because it enables us just to cast a wider net to, if someone has, is interested in the work, has been working towards certification, that it, because saying that they have to have the certification coming in could exclude people. I mean, of course, we, you know, in the interview process, we are going to prefer a certification, but I think that was the logic in in doing that, and that was, and that was also, you know, I think what we saw from the last one also.
So for maybe, maybe I don't understand, is there a difference between a certification and having a degree and and being somebody who has studied this and maybe has had a former position in this and has experience in it? Is a certification, like, what's the difference, I guess?
Well, a Pennsylvania certification requires a degree, and then on top of the degree, there's certain testing that is required for them to obtain the certification. And then within this certification, it gives them the parameters for which the role can be implemented in a school district. So for example, there's, it's, and I can't remember what it stands for, but there's, there's a thing called a CSBG. And then every, every certification under the Pennsylvania Department of Education has a set of roles and responsibilities. So if you're, if you're a certification in in seven through 12 mathematics, the only options that you have in order to be employed in the district is to teach in grade seven through 12 mathematics. And for science, as an example, science actually breaks it down in some instances where it says you need to have a certification in physics if you're going to teach physics, or you need a certification in biology in order to teach biology. So so in some instances, some certifications are broad, in other instances, some certifications are direct. So there's, the difference is, a degree is where someone goes to school, assumes an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree or some kind of degree that, to that degree, that nature, where someone with a certification is licensed to perform the duties within a public education system.
But this, this role isn't supposed to be, is a certification like a teaching certification from the state? Is that what we're talking about?
This is requiring that they have an instructional two certification from the Pennsylvania Department, not a particular certification, but at least an instructional two certification, which could be in a number of different areas.
Okay.
Ms. Steel?
I actually just want to follow up, and as many times as I repeat this, I think I would be very interested in bringing this back to Ed Committee as well, because the special education experience in a school setting preferred, actually, that that addition is making me take pause, not because I don't think special education has a role in belonging and in the work of the job, but I'm wondering why that's preferred above, say, structured literacy or like a higher literacy experience. In a lot of the conversations and a lot of the trainings that I have followed in many different professional, in many professional, like Patan has done them, the International Dyslexia Association, specifically the work of Kareem Weaver. Literacy is, is a door to belonging. And structured literacy lays the foundation for belonging. Students regarding, students regardless of background, if they struggle with reading and writing, they are going to struggle and feel, and feel failure through a large part of the school day. So I'm just wondering, because special education certification does not ensure structured literacy knowledge. I don't know if it has been updated in the last three, five years, but my experience is that isn't. So I just, I guess that So I just, I guess that my question was, why was special education prioritized rather than something else? And if it wasn't discussed, then that can definitely be brought back to Ed Committee for that. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of these were holdovers from previous, the previous job descriptions. And that's kind of how we started the process with the old job description. We said, what are some of the things that need to be changed? And we made those modifications. We got, we got feedback, and this is the resulting matter. So, and it should be known that, I mean, there's no proven track record of how this should be or should not be done. So, you know, your suggestions are not neither good or bad. They're, they're just, what are we going to do as a district to move our objective forward on this? And if we need more time to have, you know, a thoughtful discussion, then we do that. I will let everyone know, though, that, you know, when this, when we first got the resignation from our, last year's K-12 DEI Counselor, we, we knew that we needed to act quickly and because we wanted to fill that role. So several months later, here we are, you know, still having that conversation. But it, you know, speed isn't necessarily the answer to all questions, but certainly it gives us an opportunity. The Education Committee is right around the corner, so it's not like it's that far away. And, and we can, we can certainly do that. So I just want everybody to know that if there's additional input that needs to be had, we can certainly have that discussion here. We also can funnel that stuff to Dr. Regina or to Dr. Gravenese, and we can make sure that we add those things into the job description. So I just wanted to say that, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to all of this. Ms. Cantrell?
I just wanted to add, you know, I think it's okay for us to look at this through the whole Board. I do not think it needs to be through Education. It's a, it's a, something that we have as a goal as a Board to do belonging. And so I think it's important that we all look at it. I don't think it needs to be in that Committee. I do think, though, that we need to move forward, and we ought to get forward on this, and let's get this filled. I'm not trying to just, like, you know what I mean? I think it's important for us to, if there is feedback, it's been sitting here, we have the time to provide that feedback, let's get whatever we need adjusted, and let's go forward. I, I just, you know, I do think, you know, I understand the beginning of a three-year, it gives opportunity for those people to get special certifications because we have tried to have this, and they, the candidates just didn't have that. It's not out there. I agree, I would love for them to have that degree right off the bat with DEI certification put in there from day one. But it does provide a wider cast, like Ms. Austin said. But I think it's okay to be there. I think we provide feedback, see where it goes, and if we have to table it for next week, but let's, let's try to get some feedback towards us, to, you know, Dr. Regina and Dr. Zerby, and let's, I would prefer to get it moving forward.
I would, I would love to move forward with this, but, I mean, from a high level, core responsibilities are over 20 bullets, and that seems crazy. It, it still doesn't feel well thought out, it doesn't feel focused, it doesn't feel organized, it doesn't feel like there's direction. And I'm concerned that we're going to move forward and push it forward, and the same things are going to happen again where the last three years, we haven't really made any significant impact.
Yeah, Ms. Purdue?
Can I just ask a question? Just because I think this position has sat around for some time, and there are some key members on the Board that were part of reviewing this. So I just want to clarify, who the members are that were part, because I think there's also members that are also on Ed Committee. So I, I'm looking at Ms. Austin, just because I know you were working on this. I just want to understand, just so, so, just so the public is aware of who's part of it, how long we've had this job description available? I mean, I know we're working from the original job description when we started our efforts with inclusion, but I'm just wondering, like, how long the group had time to review? I know I actually saw feedback from Board members that may not be on that group also in reference to how to improve this. I even saw Ms., Ms. Cleary provided some feedback on it in reference to even like typos and additional information. So I, I thought the entire Board have seen this, this is not the first time, so I just wanted to clarify that. And, and then, once Ms. Austin speaks, we can decide, we, I mean, I'm, I don't have an issue with this coming back to Ed Committee. I do want the Board to understand that. If it comes to Board, if it, if it needs to circle back to Ed Committee, we'll have two items on here removed in reference to the job description. And then maybe Dr. Sorjean can speak to what the timelines are in reference to moving this position forward, because that also pushes things a little bit further out.
Yes, I was one of the people who reviewed this job description with administration and some other Board members. And, you know, I, I agree to Ms. Shonda's point about the core responsibilities. I think there could be a better way to organize them. I think Dr. Regina had a way of organizing them that I saw that I thought made a lot of sense, and maybe we could just revise what we have here in terms of categories of responsible, but different responsibilities and, and how they, how they work together. So I think we could just edit the job description like that, like Dr. Regina had shown us. And, I mean, other than that, I feel like we went over it. And, you know, in terms of the certification and the DEI or DEIB, you know, what I'm seeing is, I, I'm just afraid that we would be overlooking someone who did not have that certification currently. Maybe we could reconsider the timeline of getting such a certification. I think that certainly makes sense. We could say the beginning of the second year. I think the certification is, what I'm seeing online, it's sometimes non-credit, it's a, just a process to learn about different aspects of DEI and DEIB. And someone might already have some of that but need to finish, so I think we could say the beginning of the second year if that is more agreeable. So, Dr. Regina, do you, can you, are you, would you be prepared to speak on categorizing these job responsibilities a little bit differently?
We can certainly look at it. I think it's something we discussed as a Committee on trying to take some of these and streamline them a little bit more. I think it was part of our presentation discussion on ways to kind of categorize them so they're not so, if they seem scattered to you, it might be because they're not grouped the same way that we may have looked at in the presentation. So likely there is a way to do that, if the Board would be interested in it. Dr. Zerby and I'd be happy to look at that.
Any other comments? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I, so for me, I think, I'm surprised when I look at the qualifications list that it doesn't say we want someone who has experience with being a climate facilitator. We're asking somebody to come in and lead development and rollout of a district-wide framework, but yet we're, we're not requiring them to come in with experience. I just, it makes me a little concerned because I think if you're going to be expected to design and facilitate training around this, you probably have had to have had experience in this area. So I, I would like to see in the qualifications, along with experience working in a public school system, I don't think that you need experience working in a public school system as a climate facilitator. You could have been a climate facilitator in any role. So I would just think that, like, implementing climate programs anywhere would be something we'd want to see. They could have been done for any type of industrial facility, it could have been done for anything. So I'm not necessarily concerned about it in this school district, per se, but I think it would be helpful to add that. And then I think the other thing would be to streamline out some of the things that I think are not necessarily, at least to me, not aligned with that goal in mind, right? Like, acting as a student advocate during Title IX investigations seems like it's a little bit outside the sort of core responsibility framework. And like, participating in the Act 44 stuff, to me, seems like it could be a little bit outside, and maybe those would fall under, like, other duties assigned. But I feel like it could be confusing to someone who's looking at this job description thinking, I don't even know what Act 44 is, right? Or, I've never done any Act 44 stuff, I'm not qualified. I think maybe if we just stick to the things that we really want them to do, which is the training, the facilitation, the program implementation piece, they're the core responsibilities that we really want to move forward. And if we could focus on that, we might get better applicants that would, to Ms. Shonda's point, sort of move the program forward in a step function and not be so concerned about all of these sort of job description items. There's a lot in here that's about reporting, that's all these various reports. I would sort of lump all those things together and say periodic reporting to the Board, to Principals, to the Administration, like, however you want to, but I think there's a lot you could streamline to just get to the focus where we want the focus to be and skip some of the other stuff. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So then I'll go back to my, I don't think my, the other part of my question was asked, right? Because it seemed like there's a lot that needs to be looked at. I think it was discussed that should come to Ed Committee also. So I go back to my question, taking this back to Ed Committee to have a look at it, and it makes sense, Dr. Regina sit on Ed Committee, we also have Dr. Gravenese there. Taking this back to Ed Committee to, and that will be the September meeting to have a, then this will be coming, I mean, if it's the will of the Board, this will be coming back to the full Board again, hopefully in a maybe September timeline or what? And I'm just trying to get the Board to understand, also the public to understand the nature of, because we currently have this on for next week, it will most likely be taken off, and then what is that timeline that we're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, if it's approved at the end of September, then we post a position. Typically, that posts for, you know, three weeks to something of that nature. If we're getting someone that is certified in Pennsylvania or from another school district, that could be up to 60-day hold. So you, you may be looking at, you know, a December hire, possibly January.
Thank you.
Ms. Steel?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to respond because I, I was also one of the school board members who was served on the Committee on this. And I've been thinking a lot about this position, and there's been a lot of discussions about this position. To be, to be quite honest, when I reviewed it, I did miss that, the special ed experience with school setting preferred. That was one that I missed because I was looking at other parts of the qualifiers. We've looked at a lot of different versions of this. But I would rather speak up about my concerns about that now rather than when we voted on it. Also, what sits, weighted, what, what sits heavily on me is, you know, we've already had to fill this position twice. And there is a loss of, there's a cost to that, of the time needed and work that wasn't done or work that was done, and there's a learning that goes with it. But we, I do want to be, I want to see, like, you know, what can we learn from that moving forward and make sure this next hire, that, that we, we set up success and we play our role in setting up success? So, you know, if I, if I have concerns with that, I feel the need to say it now to make sure that whoever's in that, and knowing that with it being posted and approving it even next week, it would be a mid-year hire, that's a long onboarding process. One more month to get it right, one, two more months to get it right, gives us time because at this point, mid-year versus slightly end of the year, it, the school year is already underway. So it's already going to be hard to set up new structures. And there's learning time, which is great. Anyone new in, in any kind of position should spend time learning. But that, I just wanted to say that, you know, I voiced that concern because I don't, I want to try to get it wider this time in a very eloquent way.
So if, if it is the will of the Board to pull the, the facilitator job description back, we just make sure that we're all aligned with, should we be having the building liaison position moving forward? It was the feedback that we received from, from a meeting that we had with a, a community group just a week or two ago, that we can't really, we shouldn't really wait till we had a facilitator in place and that the building liaisons can act as, you know, points of contact, support for the building principal, support for our People's Services office to at least get some things completed and, and in place to, to support our students. So my question to you is, does the liaison position continue to go forward where the facilitator position goes back to Ed Committee? Is that, is that what I'm hearing feedback from folks on? Ms. Austin?
I mean, I, I am satisfied with the position as it is now, maybe with changing the required certification timeline, but I don't necessarily agree that it should go back to Ed Committee, but if that's what the Board wants to do, that's fine. In terms of the building liaisons, we had also discussed revisiting those job descriptions. So we don't have that, we, we, are you saying we might have that, those building liaison descriptions ready for?
Yeah.
Oh, they are? Okay. So then we're, we're going to move forward with those and?
Well, well, we can. Again, you know, we're
For the beginning of the year.
We're just having a discussion right now. I guess, let's clear up one item. Dr. Sorjean, if, if we were to change beginning of a third-year requirement to a two-year requirement based on what you know, is that impossible for someone to complete?
No, it is not impossible.
Okay. So, so that, that could be a modification that we could bring back. And again, as Ms. Austin, as you were saying earlier, there are some modifications to the organization of this, to the condensing of it, that we can certainly have ready for the Board to see by the Friday memo this, this week and, and remain on the agenda. So I just want people to understand that. There's, there's a lot of things from the feedback you gave this, that's even, we can make some changes. The question is, how do you want to proceed? Because I'd prefer not putting something on the agenda that's not going to be, you know, approved, so that we have a better understanding of being able to say, hey, you know what? We are going to pause, or no, we're not going to pause, we're going to move this thing forward. So thoughts? Mr. Mersky?
So I, the, the categorization that was presented really doesn't change the job description. It simply simplifies the understanding of the task, but it doesn't change the, the task required for the job. I just want to clarify that. I too am on, I too am on the Committee. I don't need to delay this, and I don't feel it needs to go back to Education. I'd like to see us move forward.
I mean, if you need to hear from everybody, I, I do not want this to go back to Ed Committee either. It was, it's been available to the whole Board for some time. So I would support what I'm hearing from Ms. Austin and Mr. Mersky, that it get revamped and shown to us in the Friday memo, no more delay and just, I'm not accusing you of delay, I mean, no more delay by the Board, and we just move forward.
Is there any other feedback from any Board members at this point in time? Ms. Steel?
Yeah, if we were to vote on it next week, I would either need to see the special education experience in a school setting preferred removed, or I would need to see structured literacy experience added. For the, for the reasons that I shared before.
May I ask you a question? Would it be better to just remove it than add other, other qualifiers that would limit people applying? Just asking for your feedback.
Yes, because as it is right now, it would limit people from applying. And I don't think it gives the appropriate understanding of instructional approaches that support the success for all.
Is there any objection to, and I know this isn't a voting meeting, I'm just trying to gather, any objection to Ms. Steel's comment? Okay, thank you. Were there any other comments that haven't been mentioned to, to date that we need feedback on before we do this?
I just have a question. Would we be able to update our Education Committee goals to make sure that it includes the success of this role? I don't know what that would look like.
We could. I mean, those are on, those are on the agenda, and those have been passed around for For quite some time. I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Those items have been on the agenda and have been passed around for quite some time as well.
It was just an idea that recently
I think we're all, I think we're all truly, you know, vested, you know, the fact that we've had this amount of conversation on this job description really proves that we're, you know, vested in making the best decision possible and, and looking towards the success of whoever takes on this position to do the work that we need done. And whether it's from my office to the Assistant Superintendents, to Principals, to our Director of People's Services, we're all committed to this. In fact, as, as you know, we're doing workshops with the intermediate unit over the next several months, not only with the Administration and, and the Board, but we're also doing it with our our school counselors, and we're going to be doing the same belonging workshop with our liaisons, assuming that gets approved in this process. So, you know, the commitment is, is nowhere, you know, absent in this process, and I want, I want you to be, yeah, so we can write a goal in there, but I think there's, there's no question that we're all looking to have a successful implementation.
In talking about goals, we had discussed in review of this job description that, who the person is reporting to, which is now Dr. Gravenese, that their goals are tied to the success of this job, that, that we need to see that, that accountability at that director level.
And that, and that will happen once this is approved, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other, Ms. Steele?
Yeah, I, I just want to echo, I, I do think it would be appropriate, just even as an Ed Committee goal, just since we are voting on it today, since we are, we want it to go forward, we don't want to delay.
We're not voting on anything.
No, not today, sorry, 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 this month. What we would want achieved within the year then, right? So what, why, like, what do we want to see next year? What's, what's the purpose of me putting it in place now? What would be our goal by the end of this year to get this person, like, I think that that would be appropriate, I'm not sure what that would be, but it would be good to see or kind of understand what that is. It might just be establish a baseline of what needs to be done in the area of belonging and have them report a plan. It may just be that.
That, that actually would be a great discussion for Ed Committee, yeah.
That sounds good.
And then we, and then we can bring that back, and then we can share that with the full board, and we can share that with the community about how we want to move forward with it. But, but just keep in mind, you know, if, if in fact we do move forward this next week and it is approved, you know, it's all going to be contingent upon when we get someone in the seat. And, and, and so to accomplish things could have some variables, but it is a good thing, as you, as you mentioned, Ms. Steele, to have that conversation and put those plans in place, and we always can adjust. Any other feedback on the matter before we move on? So, so with the feedback to this point, I am going to confer with the board president, we will decide whether or not this gets on the agenda, but all indications suggest that the modifications and with your approval next week will allow it to be approved. So thank you. Is, is there any other personnel items for discussion this evening? Seeing none, we move on to, bear with me, we move on to curriculum and programs. While there isn't anything on the agenda, I had, I did ask Dr. Regina, did you just give us an update on community cares? Dr. Regina?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Zerby. If you don't know, the last two days, there was a leadership workshop at our Sinus, and if I tell you, it was an amazing kickoff. I'm telling you, if our school year starts the way that this kickoff started, we're going to have a great year. It was super exciting, we have 50 students in the program from the high school, they're going to be starting at the beginning of October with their training, but this leadership workshop was absolutely outstanding. Everything from public speaking 101 to adolescent psychology, they were engaged with activities the entire time, we had mentors from the community engaging with them. But I need to say, I, I am, and I know we are as a district, extremely grateful for mission kids, and specifically Amy Smith's leadership on developing and organizing this leadership workshop. It was just so well done. Dr. Gravenese and I had a chance to pop in and out throughout the teacher induction process the last two days, and we just were really, really impressed with what our students were doing and how excited they were. So, great job, we're very excited, and we can't wait to report back to the board as this year progresses with this work. So, thank you.
And we do have a photo, a group photo that you guys are in, I guess it was taken today, which will use Julia to get a, some publicity on the matter, so, good. Next on the agenda, we have policy, there are no matters of policy. Under other, we have the 25, 26 goals as listed and attached. We also have the transportation, approve the following drivers as part of the employee roster program. Are there any questions under other? Yes, Ms. Perdue?
I believe you informed that maybe we were four drivers short. Do this make three, or are we still?
We're still four short.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this, this is just a process of getting the, the, we, by, by, by law, we need to put them on the agenda as approved drivers. Yeah. Yes, Ms. Cleary?
On the other, the 25, 26 goals, are you taking any feedback on that before, written or feedback this week on that?
We, if there's any other feedback, we certainly can, can take that, especially if there's things that don't change substantially, but we certainly can have a, a feedback on that.
Okay, thank you.
And if, if there are any changes, we'll do a track changes version for the board so they know what, what changes will be made, that'll, but please get them to me before 12 noon on Friday. Thank you. Any other comments on those items, and I'll turn it back over to Madam President.
All right, as you can see, there's a date for board members' calendars for your review. Is there anything for old or new business? Seeing none, we'll now move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters found in the conclusion of the comments. And you can please submit your questions via email information at mathacton.org.
Hello, my name is Julia Nuckley, I live in Lower Providence. I urge you to consider carefully before replacing the artificial turf fields with new turf instead of having grass fields. Numerous studies have shown negative health effects from playing on artificial turf fields, including increased risk of MRSA through abrasions, cancer, and other hidden health effects. Almost all artificial turf contains PFAS, and our community has been learning about how that negatively affects our health. Through weathering, this PFAS can leach into our soil and water from the turf. Children's developing brains and bodies are particularly susceptible. Additionally, there are more physical injuries on artificial turf, from twisted ankles to torn ACLs and concussions. Also, in the sun, it can become extremely hot, causing burn injuries as well as dehydration and heat illness. The Philadelphia Inquirer has some in-depth articles on the harms of artificial turf, including heartbreaking stories of children and athletes who have had cancer that they suspect was caused by artificial turf fields, including some who have died. Another consideration is the environmental impact of the disposal of the artificial turf. When it breaks down, puts PFAS in the soil and water and adds even more macroplastics to our world. Please consider having a committee study the pros and cons of artificial turf fields. I would think this committee should have the athletic director, coaches, school nurse, athletes, parents, and others. When doing their research, they need to consider carefully the source of the information. When I searched online, the first page was articles written by the artificial turf industry. Additionally, the industry is known to say their turf is PFAS-free, but when it is tested, it actually does contain PFAS. The health and safety of our children should supersede having to postpone a few games due to muddy fields. The fact that the NFL Players Association is urging the NFL to move to all grass fields shows that the athletes themselves are concerned about the negative impact of artificial turf fields. Please don't take this decision lightly. If you do go with artificial turf, the decision will last for eight to 10 years. This isn't just a line item in the budget, it is our children's lives. And I would like to use my extra time to say that with the renovations of the high school and stuff, can you please consider putting in sidewalks around the perimeter of the campus property so that students who walk to school can, as it is now, they walk through the wet grass, the morning dew, and then their socks and shoes are wet all day? That's, I'm sure that's very frustrating for them. And then, I have 30 seconds left. You mentioned replacing the, the lights with LED. I'm surprised you haven't done that already, that seems like a, a no-brainer to me. I mean, I'm, I know it's different on this type of building level, but 10 years ago, I spent $300 on LED, LED lights for my home. The next year, my electricity bills dropped by $500. So it would seem that would pay for itself in the reduction in the, in the utility bills by switching to LEDs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim Malik, more sister, I'm going to talk about the Schrader scheme that we were looking at up there. Renovation? Is anybody shocked by what they saw? Anybody look at the cost and go, renovation? You guys wasted $2 million on a new school concept to come up with a smaller new school concept? It's crazy. Renovation to renovate, most of that is new construction. How much is Schrader getting paid for the design phase up through the Act 34 hearing for this? If we need an Act 34 hearing? What is it? Two mil? Another two mil down the tubes? How much do they get for the entire project? I, I thought I heard him say 5%. So 5% of, we'll go with the top number, is 10 million bucks. Guys are crazy. This, it's ridiculous. Have you done any classroom efficiency or utilization studies? You don't need a wing of new classrooms. You got 30 empty ones here right now if you do the, do the math, do the numbers, look at the enrollment. Now, the cost, I'm going to use the all-in number, just like Ms. Graff. There's nothing optional about the optional column. You're, you're going to need all that stuff. So, your baseline's $127 million, but not really. The total cost is 127 plus 150, it's 270. That's how much it's going to cost. 1A, 146 mil, plus 190 million interest cost. So that's another 340. That's 340 mil for 1A. Same thing for 1B. Total cost, 340 million dollars. 2A and B, 176 million, 182 million, you got to add 220 million for interest. That's 400 million. You're back to new school time. It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. You can't vote on this in October, what's the rush for something like that? It's crazy. You can't afford, you couldn't afford the new school, that you can't afford this either if you go with what I think you're going to go with, 2A, 2B, Z, X, Y, Z, whatever. It's crazy. How, a new auditorium, you want a new auditorium? What's the capacity of your new auditorium? It's going to be less than your auditorium you have now. How much is it going to cost? Why do we need it? We don't. So take the new auditorium out, save yourself a couple million dollars. Guys are totally, this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Janine Darby, I'm a Mathacton parent of four children, two alums, two high schoolers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I want to begin by expressing my, my support for the new climate and belonging facilitator position and my appreciation for the school board's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging. So thank you. The creation of the belonging and climate facilitator position reflects an essential step toward strengthening our Mathacton schools environment, where every student, staff member, and family feels seen, valued, and supported. The job description is thoughtful, and I agree with the work outlined. It is work that truly matters, for sure. That said, I do have concern with how the position is being structured. This is now the third attempt in just five years to bring this type of role to Mathacton. That fact alone tells us something important. What we've tried in the past hasn't been enough. We cannot afford to repeat the same mistakes. If we are serious about excellence in our schools, then this time, we must get it right. And that means establishing the position as administrative role. The specialized nature of the responsibilities, supporting schools and climate and belonging, working with students and families, and serving as a resource across the district, demands a level of, of experience, expertise, and authority that is best aligned with the administrator level position. And let's be honest, this is not a role that can and should be filled at a modest salary level. To attract a candidate with the background and leadership ability, this work requires, that this work requires, we must prepare to offer a higher salary. Pairing that with an administrative title would make the role both competitive and effective. I'm encouraged to hear that the school building belonging liaisons will be helping to support this innovative individual, and I'm hoping that they are placed before the school year begins, because this collaboration will be important. But in order for this initiative to truly take root, we need leadership. Someone who not only has the skill set, but also the positional authority to make lasting change across the district. So, my respectful ask tonight is this. Please strongly consider elevating this position to the administrative level. This is our third attempt in five years. Let's not allow it to become a fourth. This is our chance to finally get it right, and I urge you to take it. Our students, our staff.
I apologize, your time is up.
Okay, thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. I agree with Dr. Darby that this new wellness and, and climate change position should, fits in with an administrative mentality rather than an MEA or a teaching mentality. With regard to the, the position right up for the, for the climate change facilitator, there were 20, there were 25 or 26 different, different details of the job in that description, and I think that, that is a, not a, not a, a way of evaluating what has to be done or, or what a person in the position would be accomplishing. Needs a lot more work, and where there was a committee of some of the board members working at, that's not a, a, an alternative to having the education committee meeting on the subject, because when you have a, a committee meeting, a public, a public committee meeting on a subject, you get public input, whereas if the board has a committee meeting off to the side, the public is excluded by definition, not, not, I'm not saying it's intentional, but I think it's a defect. With regard to the Schrader presentation earlier this evening, I think that total costs seem secondary, and I think that, I think that the, there was a lot of good work went into their presentation, but I, I think it's, it's lacking in terms of, of educational benefits to, to additions to the, to the facility, and it's not obvious to me that saying that, that law prohibits And it's not obvious to me that saying that law prohibits building a replacement for Farina...
I'm sorry, your time is up, I apologize.
You're sorry again.
I am, I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Get real.
I want to say thank you to the board for having this great discussion this evening about the climate position. I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and the time and the effort that all of you are putting into this. I would like to speak on the liaison position. Just briefly, Dr. Zerby had mentioned that there will be a workshop for the liaisons when they take on this role, which is wonderful. I would just ask that somehow it be documented, or it happens that there's continuing opportunities for them to grow into that position, because anyone who's doing this work, excuse me, anyone doing this work recognizes that it's not a one-and-done thing. It's not like you take a class and you get a certification and then it's done. It's something, it's like anything else with education, right, or with relationships, or within climate, you need to continually be evaluating yourself and evaluating how you're doing the work. So, I thought that that, that aspect of it was great. I did have a concern about, it says, providing feedback, but it doesn't necessarily say that there's open communication with the climate facilitator between liaisons. I don't, I'm not really sure how that all fits together, so if you could just take a look at that. I want to say thank you to Ms. Graff for her comments about the climate work being the necessity in this position. I don't understand why it's, it requires a teacher certification, and it's nothing against teachers, it's just that's, like, the whole point of bringing somebody into the district to do this work is because it's not something that the teachers inherently have in depth in their training. So, administration needs that training, teachers need that training, you need someone that understands the actual work that needs to be accomplished. I thought all the core requirements that are listed, I personally thought it was great, I thought it was really detailed and very thoughtful, so I think that that's great. I think that Dr. Gravenese, as someone who's working closely with that person, is a good fit. However, I agree with Dr. Darby that it should be an admin-level position if we really want to have the effect. Tonight, I'm wearing my BSU shirt from 2020, 2021, because these were the kids. This was the year where the district made the commitment to the students to do this work, and we're still trying to figure it out, how many years later. It's, there were alum, members of the community, students that came forward. When I talk to students now about climate in the schools and culture in the schools, they say the commitment isn't there. That's what they're telling us. They're trying, they're trying to figure out in other ways how to create that commitment. So, we have to do something. I agree, there's, there is an urgency in this, and I appreciate every single one of you that are saying that, I truly do, but I also think we have to set it up to go well. That's, that's the key. And are we making sure...
Sorry, thank you so much, I apologize. Again, I apologize this evening. Thank you.
Erica Sabinski, Audubon, parent of two Mathacton High School students. I came here tonight not knowing exactly what the belonging and climate facilitator job description was, because I'm never successful at pulling up the agenda manager, that's on me, I'm sure, but, so I don't know exactly what it entails. But these are my thoughts on what I would like a belonging and climate facilitator to think about, and so I just wanted to pass that along, because this is what I feel like they should be considering. They should be looking at it as not a problem, that we are blessed to have such a rich culture of students in our district, that we have students of various colors, of various cultural backgrounds, of various genders, of various sexual orientations, and all of the different things that go into creating the ideal climate and making our students belong and feel like they belong. So, I don't want this to look at, I don't want us to look at this as a problem, that we need to fill this job. I want us to look at this as a gift, that we have all of these students that we can serve by filling this job, whether it's my child who is trans, or someone else's child who has a different skin color than a lot of their classmates, or someone's child who learns differently. This is a gift that we can give our students. It's not a problem that we're trying to fix, it's a gift. So, I want the person that we hire to see it as that gift, and I want all of us to see it as that gift. And I think sometimes we get a little in the weeds on looking at it as a problem and not as a gift. And we do that with, I think, a lot of, we, we as parents, we as, as everybody, and look at things as problems. I want that DEI person, our facilitator, to look beyond their own experiences with DEI. What, what, what inequality did they have that brought them to this? And I want them to be able to see the other things. Did they come at it because of their skin tone? Well, what about the gender issues? Or did they come at it because of gender issues? What about skins? I mean, all of the different things that come into it, look beyond their effect and see what else is out there. Sorry, I'm going to hurry up. Also, two other things in the presentation about the school building, which I didn't know was coming out tonight, I kept hearing ADA-friendly? I don't know if that's just a terminology, but I would really like our building to be ADA-compliant. I have a physical disability, I don't want spaces that are ADA-friendly, I want them compliant. I want kids to be able to get in and out of our pool easily, not just a little easier. So, please make sure that it's actually compliant, not just friendly. And last but not least, I live at the far end of the district, so please, if we're going to look at a space for Farina, could it be centrally located, not located by the high school? When I had little kids and I had to range for daycare so that I could bring my incoming kindergartner to get, to get evaluated for services, it was really hard to get the 20 minutes up to Farina. That was far for me, so, yeah, I'm sorry, my time's up, but centrally located, please.
Sorry, thank you very much, your time's up. I appreciate all of the comments this evening, thank you very much. With the, anyone else for the courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, we will now, any comments or questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, Ms. Alston, Ms. Perdue, have a good evening, everyone, and thank you very much.